Tuesday, May 13. I'm going to start for getting to your presentation. I just wanted to check with the time that we have tonight. I want to make sure you'll be here. From Lisa on the, sorry. Yes, on the Equity Plan work. I also want to make sure that we, I know there's some discussion on the COVID review. I know we really need to talk about the climate change resolutions. I'm going to propose for consideration postponing the structure options around shared schools and that at schools, just from a timing perspective. I'm not sure if we can do all of these topics together tonight. So feelings of directors?
So you're proposing B and E?
I'm proposing that we keep B, D, and E. I think, I think Matt's prepared to talk a little bit about D. Is that correct, Matt? I don't know how long of a topic that is. I just want to make sure you have time for the resolution on climate action. We've been, we've heard so much from the community on that, but I don't know that we do not have that kind of person tonight. I'm just worried about time.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to, I guess, share back on D at this point. I think what I'm hopeful for is to get some direction from you all about where to go with that next. So I do think we need to have a conversation about it though.
Can we just sort of time down because it's like ten minutes max? And then, and then so will, if the board is okay, that will return soon.
Well, that, okay, so you just want direction from us and then what Phil was asking about is like we're actually like have a legit discussion about.
Discussion, yes, yeah, that needs to be had.
I agree.
I mean, that's what I kind of thought coming in that we were going to have this talk around. So whatever it needs to happen.
If it is closed, it needs to happen whether it's here at the board table.
So maybe you guys could identify what you'd like us to provide you with for that discussion and then we can have a bigger discussion following.
Let's do that.
I think that discussion needs us nine o'clock at night and the other stuff. And it doesn't get a lot of attention otherwise.
So we won't have the conversation most of the time, but what we want to see in the board set time. Okay, let's go into the comprehensive plan system first.
Yay. So we made little packets for you guys and I'm going to go through this pretty quickly because I know you've already had a lot of information thrown at you. I didn't want to give you a sort of update on what we're doing in terms of the process that we're doing, starting last month. I'm going to stand over here so I'm not completely.
That just went.
Oh, well, there's another one there. So just a couple of things I'm going to go through really quickly because everything that I'm going to show you is in your packet. So I won't say all the words. I just wanted to give you an overview. There should be, oh, only ten packets.
I was going to say, that should go to.
Matt already has one because he's on the development. Oh, you already have one too. So you've got to share it with somebody else.
I know, I have one.
Yeah, you can.
You can have one, you're special. Okay, so anyways, in the, in the packet is a couple of things. One of which is this document, which shows you what are the guiding principles for the process that we're going to be enacting. So these guiding principles are the same guiding principles that we used at the University of Iowa just this last year to come up with the comprehensive equity plan that we released in April. I was one of the people that led that charge. They gave me the institutional diversity, equity, inclusion, legacy award for that work. So now we're using that same process here in your district. So alignment and integrated, we want it to be aligned with what you're currently doing in terms of accountability and structure and goals. We want it to be integrated in the sense that we're building out what you're currently doing, not making up something from scratch that's not related to what you're doing. We want it to be data and research informed. So we want it not to be driven by data and research, but informed by what we're doing well and not so well. We want it to be inclusive and I'll sort of talk about that more in a second. And then accountable, so any kind of plan can look really pretty. It can go through a great process, but then if there's no accountability within it, it basically doesn't do very much. Okay, so how is it inclusive? The second thing that's in your packet is a timeline. There's several things that we're doing to make this process inclusive. One of them is to have a development group. So we had this first meeting last night. You all have a representative on that and Ruthina is also going to be joining. The cabinet also has a member. Matt is representing the cabinet. You also have the Equity Advisory Committee being represented by two people. You also have all the major stakeholders, faculty, teachers, students, parents, community members, all on this group. It's forty people. So that's the development group. This is the group that's going to help guide the work. They're going to be able to synthesize all the information that we receive. And the kinds of information they're going to receive are, one, they're going to get feedback from listening sessions that we're hosting, such as this one. So we're doing seven listening sessions with leadership groups such as yourself. We did one earlier today with the cabinet. We've done one with the admin council, which is the principals and assistant principals in the district. We've done one with the multicultural gender fair committee. We're doing one with the cultural proficiency team. We're doing one with the Equity Advisory Committee. So they all last thirty minutes or more, up to ninety minutes, depending on what we can get on people's schedules. And we'll do that in a second after I go through this overview. So each of these listening sessions, we type up what we hear into themes around all the topics and that's something that we'll give to the development group. We're doing strategic interviews with each of the directors, some in small groups and some individually, in order to see what are they currently doing and how is equity embedded in their current goals and practices? This is how it's going to make it so that it's integrated into current practices in the district. We don't want people to recommend the district do something that they're already currently doing, right? So we want to know how we can build on what's currently happening. Public forums, many of you, did these guys get the email you sent out yesterday?
I hope so.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, so email went out yesterday to tell the public that they could engage in this process in two ways. One is to attend one of the two public forums that we're having in May. The other is to fill out a survey. The survey has the same four questions that we use in the listening sessions, which we're about to use with you all. You get one additional question because you're a leadership group. So we'll also synthesize that information. And those are the different ways that this process is inclusive. It allows multiple opportunities for people within the district and outside of the district, all stakeholder groups to participate. One of the big reasons why we want the process to be inclusive is because you need the plan to be adopted by everybody. You need buy-in, you need people to feel like they own it. You need everybody to feel that they have both a stake in the game and also leadership. It's everybody's job, basically. Okay, oh, and the timeline is we hope to have it done by the end of July. We'd like to present it at the July board meeting, July 23rd. The other thing in your packet is a one pager on what your currently, what your current equity plan looks like, so one that just expired. So it's not the full thing, it's just the central goal that motivates it, which is your third strategic goal of your district, and then all the four objectives that fall under that. You can look at that yourself. This is, so what we're going to do, what we're going to start with in this listening session is having you, so in your packet, if you open it up, there's a thing on the left-hand side, the last form in the left-hand side. If you pull that out, you're going to write on that. The first question, we're going to collect these afterwards. This is one of the ways that we collect the input from you all. I know it's late at night for you to start doing homework and everything, but we're going there anyways. So spend a couple of minutes thinking about what you think are the core pressing, most important equity challenges or concerns in the school district. I put on here, and it's in your packet, some ideas to get your juices flowing, get you thinking about what are the kinds of things that people tend to think about. You think about things, everything from student achievement and access to learning, whether that's in special ed or in advanced classes, you know, opportunities to learn kinds of things, all the way to, you know, other student outcomes like discipline and behavior. But it goes all the way down to educator-related things, you know, in terms of diversity of your workforce, cultural competence in terms of practices and knowledge and skills of those teachers and workforce, all the way down to district policies and practices, everything from, you know, attendance zone boundaries to funding to, you know, all of that stuff. So you can think, you can think specific levels, you know, district building, teacher, individuals. You can think, you know, student-focused versus teacher-focused. You can think about it however you want. So just take a couple of minutes and jot down some of your initial ideas on your feedback form, please, if you will. Some people are not participating because they've already participated. So they get a pass. You get a pass and you get a pass and you, you are. Amy doesn't get a pass. I'm a teacher, I'm like, I see.
You take attendance earlier. I like that.
You could just say, I captured you. I got you.
Matt filmed one off.
Yeah, see?
I know.
Wait, wait. I got her.
So after you've identified a couple of equity challenges, you can move down to that second question, which is now that you've identified some concerns or issues that you think we should focus on in the equity plan, or just that are some of the largest equity issues that the district should or can address? If you can jot down an answer to the second question, which is how do you think we should go about addressing it? You could think short-term and long-term. You can think in terms of policies. Think in terms of individual actors' behaviors. You can think about different levels. Is this a school-level thing? A district-level thing? Both? Okay, so that was just a couple of minutes to get your individual brainstorming down. If I could have some volunteers to share what your equity challenge or challenges were, maybe just share one, and what you identified as something that could be done to address it. When other people are saying their things out loud, be thinking about, do you want to add something on to that about, I think that's a great idea, I think we would also need to do this, or that this would be an additional component, this would be a barrier, a challenge, or an opportunity, things like that. So who would like to start us out? Thank you for volunteering.
Hiring, retaining, and promoting teachers, administrators of color is one of what I picked as precedent equity-related concerns. How do you think we can go about addressing it? Creating mentorship programs for, say, teachers, administrators of color, that focusing on barriers that they face when we place them out in our schools and really work to support and address some of those barriers.
Absolutely. Anybody want to add on to that? Other ideas for how to address it? Other people have it as a.
I've mentioned it before at different things when we talked about retaining staff as the state interview practice as opposed to the exit interview and find out what really keeps people staying here so we can do it more.
Yeah, yeah, you could collect that information either with stay interviews, you could also collect it on surveys. Yes, please.
Work on grow your own.
Grow your own.
Work within. I know we've gotten that from you guys many times, the benefits of doing that. So, you know, the, the way you live it is to promote within. And then that, that way it's not just bringing in new talent, but it's also recognizing the talent you have and cultivating it and making sure that people see that there is opportunity for advancement and that.
Yeah, what better way to have teachers of color come to the district if they have a positive experience as a student? Any other add-ons for recruitment, retention, and advancement or promotion of teacher, staff, faculty of color? What's another equity concern that people have? Yes, please.
Lack of offering in career tech sectors. With our college-only push, we leave a huge portion of the population unrepresented and it's, we don't give alternative paths to success.
What was your suggestion or suggestions for how to rectify that?
Offer more, offer those courses at our schools. Make it meet a five-minute bell schedule. Encourage exploration. Recognize that citizens with competencies makes us a better community. And recognizing that even an engineer that knows how to weld is a better engineer than one that understands the theory of welding but doesn't understand the practicality.
Yeah. Anybody have anything else to add about other, either challenges or strengths of what Phil said?
Some of the stuff we talked about in the past and maybe we'll talk about here in a little bit, but that really really get, you know, a more vertical approach in that regard, you know, starting at an earlier age and make sure they create the whole pathway, not just sort of a last resort kind of thing.
Anybody else have anything about curriculum or opportunities for different kinds of learning?
Preschool access.
Okay.
I don't know if that's curriculum, but it's.
Access, education, learning opportunities?
And for me, you know, this way is such an important opportunity. Families have to afford it, finding ways of getting their students in, if you have it more available to all families. I think that would address academic achievement, disparities, you know, meetings, disparities at some point. How do we address it? This is for preschool committee, try to find ways of continuing to grow, what would be state funding?
Yeah, I remember that curriculum piece, like our ethnic studies course, you know, we had a conversation last night where people don't know, they don't know. They might not know how to advocate, they might not know the language of equity or diversity or inclusion. And so they might not volunteer to take a course like that. So making something that required or making sure it's really embedded in the curriculum so that it's not just, oh, social justice is an interesting topic, but actually this is embedded in, in your experiences.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate that you said both, that you could add additional courses, but you can also work on embedding some of that content within existing courses. It doesn't always have to be an add-on. What were some other equity challenges? Yes?
Oh, I'm picking or piggybacking on that a bit. I feel like it's a societal challenge, but we see it particularly here in Iowa City. We just don't have good integration of our students. If you look at our high schools, the kids really self-segregate by income and by race. And I feel like we need to do a better job with our preschoolers and with our kindergartners and our first graders and lower elementary, having ethnic studies be part of our conversation in the classroom, not so much as a curriculum, but just part of the everyday approach to I don't know how to do that. I think we need a more diverse staff, that would also help. But I think our kids, some of our kids are coming to, through our system without, they get to a certain age in our system where they haven't had that conversation and that integration and then it spills over to all the students, I think. And I'm not blaming anyone, I'm just saying, I'm just noticing it. I feel like it's something I'd like to do better earlier on.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so one of the other questions that I want to ask you specifically as a leadership group, so the other leadership groups that we're doing listening sessions with, we also asked this question, which is what do you think is your role as a particular type of leadership group in the school district? What are your roles and responsibilities when it comes to equity and achieving or advancing equity in this district? Different levels of leadership, you might think of having different roles or responsibilities. What do you see yours as, as school board members? Can you say more?
I'm so tired. But it's creating a priority around equity. It's codifying it in whatever ways we can from a policy perspective, goals for the district perspective. We work with the superintendent on what his goals are for coming here. And if we continue to make equity a priority, we codify it, it keeps it front and center. And, and we're set in expectation that, that we need to perform against, you know, the policy, but also the goals we need.
Were you going to say something?
Yeah, I think it's something I always kind of hear from Cersei and Equity Committee is that we should ask questions with the equity lens. Yes, and, and then our title is director and I think we direct the superintendent and his team on how to, what we want them to do.
Ask questions, look at data, decide if they have data.
I think one thing we can do is attempt to, you know, get out of the communities that aren't coming to us. Kind of get an office and send emails and make efforts, concerted efforts to do that. Thinking of which, you know, we might think about putting a couple of them in weeks, you know, just to.
Be inclusive?
Well, it's interesting that you said that because one of the things I wrote down on my equity-related concern was criminal communication to all stakeholders. Language, access to email, phone, which one do they prefer? You know, how we're going to do that, it's a large task, but if only one portion of the population isn't getting the full information, then it's not the best.
Yeah, I mean, I would also add to that, it's not only what form of communication people prefer, it's also whether or not you're developing relationships with all types of parents, you know? Because it doesn't always matter what the form of communication is, it just matters whether or not they feel comfortable receiving information from you or communicating.
Right.
Yeah, not everybody responds to emails. I'm a dinosaur, I know, but it's, it's not my preferred choice of communication.
And then, that's what Sarah said, if we never know that about you because we don't ask, or find out, then we never know. No, 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 I'm just using an example. We would just keep sending you emails unless we found out that you don't prefer to or want to or use email. So you would find out what the preferred communication is, which is phone call, I assume. And so now that you know that, then you would, so yeah.
What are some other responsibilities you guys think you have as board members of a particular leadership group?
To, you know, make ourselves aware of what the issues are, to educate ourselves. And then a couple of times, some professional development on the board to understand that, step out of our comfort box and challenge ourselves.
Yeah. Okay, so for the last two minutes with you, can you flip your paper over and tell me two more things? One of which is what do you think is the main takeaway? If you had to just tell me one thing that we need to know in coming up with the comprehensive equity plan, what is that? Is there a particular challenge or barrier that we need to be focused on and make sure that we overcome, that we address? And then if you could only make one recommendation to the development group about what you want to see happening, what would that one recommendation be? Big questions, I know. This is what we get to talk about at nine to nine-thirty on Tuesday night. So that when I keep going back with more, you'll just put it in your packet. I didn't make a sticker for the packet, but.
Thank you.
Get me some more is coming. You should bring the binder, you're really a girl.
I don't think I put July 23rd on my agenda. I only can do that. I was just looking at my list of things, that's my list of Sarah things.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't think I put that on July 23rd. You're going to present to the board. I gotta add to the agenda. Do they decide what agenda I have to be doing tonight or no? Oh, sweet.
Does that mean that I have to come to the board meetings in a row?
I think so. Let me see.
Frequent flyer pass?
Should be even lunch dinner.
Wait, I don't have anything on June 20th. I don't have anything on June 25th, am I supposed to?
Oh, no, I hope not.
June 11th, July 9th, July 23rd, you get, you get a board meeting off.
Yeah, okay, good.
You get a pass on June 25th.
Oh, yeah, that's because I'm going to my daughter's graduation.
That might be a good thing.
I do have a life, actually, sometimes.
Where's that at?
Seattle. Just getting your MSW, finishing.
Awesome.
Oh, it's not good.
That's Jan count.
There's only seven.
That's all there is.
That's Rosie. About two, three, I can't be Rosie.
I'm still here.
You're special.
I'm still here.
So I know that this twenty-five minutes together was not enough time to really do justice to these questions. I completely recognize that. So the development group will be meeting six more times, almost weekly, on Monday nights, and you have two representatives, JP and Ruthina. So if you do have more thoughts after this and you'd like to share them, and you could either share them with your colleagues or you could send them directly to me. If you, you know, lay awake at night and think more about equity considerations and want to tell me more about it, I'm happy to add it to the input from the board.
Can you remind one time what the output is of the development group, it's the revised kind of.
It's, it's, yeah, it's a new comprehensive equity plan.
And then are there like action plans coming to them or they just?
Yeah, so.
Action plans.
Yeah, sorry. We're thinking to model it the same way we did the university plan, which is it has goals and then within each goal it has strategies. Within each strategy it has critical tasks. With each critical task it has leader responsible offices or people, timelines, and then metrics for assessing.
Oh, yeah, thank you. That's great. Well, just, I mean, that, that development action whole stuff, it's like a big blue ocean and you're one. It's how you break it down into small increments that you can actually get it done and see the progress and the momentum and then, you know. That's great.
Yep, yeah, yeah. Part of the development group is going to be prioritizing. So one of the things that you all might have said is your role as board members is prioritizing. Lots of people ask you for things. You have to prioritize, you can't do everything, right? That's something the development group is going to do. Because we're not going to give you an action plan that says you're supposed to do seventy-two things in the next year because you're not going to be able to do it. Thank you. Yeah. Amy, thank you for not giving us seventy-two things. Well, it's not gonna be me. It's the development group. Your own community is going to give you the plan.
That's fantastic. It's really good. Thank you so much.
Okay, yeah, so go ahead and pass your forms over to Rachel because she'll collect them and write down whatever you say. Thank you very much for your time.
You too. We're trying to have a lovely evening. Okay. The topic is on, yeah, and what we would like to see in our, in our board. Is this a discussion item, maybe?
Yeah, I think part of this came up. We had that conversation about the transition that Ames went through. And so we know that the state requires that we offer four different strands of CTE. And we've been trying to build pathways, career pathways, going from elementary all the way through junior high and high school. But one of the questions that, that we've had is, it's really a twofold question. Which areas of focus would the board prefer to see us in those four areas of offering? What's your priority focus there? And then the other question that we have, and I, some of this came out of, Phil talked about going to Des Moines. This would have been, I don't know, a couple of iterations of our conversation ago. But, you know, Matt and I have talked about the value perhaps having someone come in from outside and take a look at our CTE program. And look at some of the information that we know is available to us from ICAD and workforce development about areas of shortage in the corridor. And then getting some input, again, perhaps from somebody externally about which areas we ought to be emphasizing in CTE. And, because we have a limited set of resources, we can't offer all those strands out there. And pick those that have the greatest opportunity, that have significant impact for students in the district. And then how do we go all in on that? So.
Well, that's, and when you're talking about Des Moines, you're talking about Central Campus in Des Moines, which, which we visited. And I don't know if it's possible to allow Steve to be a part of the conversation because Steve was part of that discussion too. So if Steve wants to share something with us as well. But we did have a work session at Northwest Junior High where we discussed about, you know, exactly what we're discussing again about reaching out. And I know when we visited Center Campus, the principal there, correct, Matt? That was, was talking about helping other districts and things. And I think that was part of what, I think we were hoping is because what they were doing there was really, has been recognized by many as a premier career in tech facility and should be a model to be followed. But I guess we haven't, he, he's, he's got a job elsewhere or something or...
Yeah, we tried, we tried with him and then that didn't work out.
That invitation didn't go further, but, but definitely we have got to get off zero and, and start making some progress. And it's, we've got to, and I agree, we've got to reach out to business. We got to recognize that. But we also kind of recognize that, that Iowa City is a concrete island surrounded by agriculture. And our state, one in five jobs is that. And, you know, we spent three years on an ag curriculum that, you know, we've got to make it happen. And if that means getting with Grantwood AEA and finding out what kind of grant sources are available to us, the leadership opportunities with FFA. You just have to go and talk to a banker as far as where they've learned their speaking skills and those leadership skills, their bar mastery skills. It's, that's huge for us. And I know you can point to other programs and say, that's like it. Well, I'm sorry. I've been to the state convention many times and it's, it's something unique. It's national. It's very much a part of Iowa and it needs to be a part of us. But we have got to align our curriculum at the junior high and with the high school. And it has to be systematic. And when we have students that go to the regional center and take an advanced course, they have to be able to read a tape measure and have the competency so they can get full participation there. And our drop off rates aren't recognizably, that we recognize we got a problem. So, but we've, we've got to have it. That needs a five-minute bell schedule and get it into our schools and our curriculum. Because the nation is, is doing this, we've got to recognize it here as well.
Steve, you said we have to have four strands?
We're required to teach four. And, and given, you know, just the, the issues that we have with staffing and the costs that go along with it, we know we can't do everything. So it's, it's picking those four strands, making sure we go deep. And remember Diane did the alignments to say what courses should be, you'd be taking. So as a sixth grader, you can start thinking about that. And it may require some hard conversations about stopping doing some of the things that we're doing now so that we can focus on doing the things that are, are right for our community.
Yeah, I'd love to see some data, some labor data on thirty-year projections. Because we're gonna have to focus. We can't do everything. I, you know, I think kids can benefit from lots of different things. But I, yeah, and I, you know, junior high, I think getting to elementary school much earlier, getting kids in the mindset that it's not just college and not to disparage any one thing or the other, but say... So I'd like to see like our data, corridor statewide, you know, where the jobs are, what the projections look like thirty years out.
I could also, can you comment to the students? Well, I'm not gonna get the word by the photo web.
Well, well, and installation and, and the windmill technician. And those are all, all courses that don't require four-year degree. They, and, and I think too, our, our discussion should be on post-secondary certification, not necessarily college.
Right. Kirkwood has a wind turbine tech certification program.
I was just gonna say, I bet healthcare is right up there too.
I'm sure it is. Yeah.
So what, do we have four strands now?
We do, but the question...
What are they?
Yeah.
So you have your typical industrial tech. You have your business, your health services. And family consumer science. I mean, those are the, the terms I'll tell you guys. The state has recently renamed those. So if you would go on this, the website and see the wheel of the different six, they would have different terminology attached to them. But those are what they're recognizable as in our system. Ag would have been a fifth strand for us. We wouldn't have been a completer in that strand. We wouldn't have had all the courses because we would have just started with one. But we have to be able to have what they call a completer strand in each of those areas somehow in our system. We do use some courses at Kirkwood to count for that health services strand.
Questions about if it's all continued to your schools or...
So that's where Steve's saying, you know, if we're gonna have a heavier focus on one, you may do the minimum to still have a completer strand in some of those. But you may have more offerings than one of the four or two of the four, in a sense. And so, you know, when you try to do five or six, then you're obviously, you know, that would take additional resources for us to do. So if we're looking at it from a fixed resource standpoint, that also might be a consideration. But those are some of the things I think we could bring back to you, have a bigger conversation about, match it with some data that like JP's referencing from...
Job.
Yeah.
If the eligibility protection is not available, the, the, the jobs that are going to be present in our region.
And it might be a multiple time conversation too, right? It might be good to familiarize us with what is in the, in the system. It might take us a little bit longer to come back with some of that job data. Might, might not, I don't know. I just haven't looked for that.
Kirk, Kirkwood, I... Kirkwood Community College actually works with the local chambers to do workforce development. Because I know I've seen them presented at the chamber and some other places. So I think they have a lot of that job data. I'm sure we could get that from them, perhaps have them come in and talk to us about that.
From the tree, you know, the people on the ground who are aware of the job openings are and that sort of thing. Trades and construction.
And I know, and those of you that know Kirkwood, their certification programs are really nimble. And they, they design those to meet needs because they can turn those around really quickly and, and get them out there. And that's one of the reasons they do all that workforce analysis. And, and it's very timely and, and I think it would help us as, as we look forward. You know, remember one of the things that Phil was talking about was Ames made the decision to give up FCS. And, and that may be, you know, I'm just saying, that may be, that kind of conversation that we want to have. But I think we want to make sure that we do that upfront. People have a chance to have input, talk about it, think about where we ought to be spending our time, energy, and effort so that the kids have a deep strand going from seven to twelve so that they can be completers, that they can do a lot of that work on campus with us so that they're, they're best prepared when they leave.
Well, and another thing we need to look at too is maybe we, we're offering this way way too much AP. Because everything comes at a cost of something else. And I hate to be pitting curriculum against curriculum. But when we are charged with a K-12 set, offering college, that's thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixty. That's outside of our initial charge. And the State Department of Ed doesn't, doesn't require us to do AP. And I'm not saying that we eliminate it completely. But we can definitely look at offering maybe some courses, not every year, but every other year, something like that. So if students that want to take that, they could. But we have got to, and, and I'm dead serious. It's a, it's a equity issue when we don't have those pathways for students. And if we don't recognize that college debt is a, is a burden for our nation, others have, whether we choose to or not. And, you know, we're one of the highest states in the nation for, with, with college debt, with students. So giving pathways and, and opportunities has to be something that we have to recognize and we have to get going.
So what do you need from us?
We were really looking more for consensus that we were moving in the right direction with this. You know, we, we wanted to get the gentleman from Des Moines to help us out. We tried for a couple of months. That didn't pan out for us. So before we reach out and look to potentially bring somebody else in to do that kind of work with us, we wanted to make sure that this was a direction the U S Board were interested in us heading.
Do you have this board goal?
Yes.
We're all in alignment of that.
And we also, you know, in, in different years, we've had board goals or ends policy discussions about career in tech. And, you know, we, we comment many times at the foundation. You know, we, we have all these experiences that every eighth grader sees an opportunity. Well, do we have a, have a serious discussion with every eighth grader about the opportunities in an apprenticeship? That you have an opportunity to get a middle-class income without college debt? Do we have those discussions with mom and dad? Many times I've discussed it on our college nights. We have to have, allow the trade unions to come in and give us that same presentation, that same sales pitch that mom and dad get for everybody to go to college. And we lay it out. We make it very easy for any parent that wants to go to college. Okay, this is what, this, the testing you have to do with this year. These are the courses you have to take. We lay it all out for them. On the other alternative, there's nothing. Somebody wants to go to an apprenticeship. Well, you gotta go on, what is it, Workforce Iowa or that Iowa Ready website to try and figure it out for yourself. We should be those people having those discussions. And, and it should be at the same night, with the same equal time.
And I know Janet's been part of those conversations when we went working with the chamber and ICAD. And now I can't remember Janet, if you remember what their goal is. But we've got lots of kids out there that went queried about what is it that you would like to do, either from a job shadowing or a, a work experience. We, we have not had businesses that have volunteered to provide experiences for kids. And so they're left unfilled. So we've had good conversations with the chamber and ICAD. And they're aggressively recruiting business partners out there that are willing to invite our kids in so that they can actually get those job shadowing and internship experiences so that they can see something that they might not be familiar with, which might then give them the opportunity to think about a career and, and choices that they make there. So I know they're actively engaged in recruiting businesses in the kind of greater Iowa City area right now. They've been doing that, I don't know, about two, three months. But they've got a, they've got a goal by the time we get to the next school year so we don't have kids that have requests that go unfilled.
I think you just got to put it on equal footing because, you know, when you say we make it easy, not all of our families, not easy to navigate the college path either. It's, we do have a lot of families. So I think we just put things on equal footing, right? And say, there are multiple options. I mean, I think student debt is, we probably don't emphasize that enough. We probably set a lot of kids up to take on eighty grand with no concept of how they're gonna pay for that or, or a four-year degree that might. And I just think that earlier, we started a realistic conversation with the kids about what it takes to be an active, productive citizen. And there's a lot of different options out there. Because I do think, the truth is, college debt makes a lot of these other alternatives way more economically sensible. Not to pick on French literature, but I don't owe a BA in that issue in this economy if it costs eighty grand to get that. For my own, well, I, I think I got a lot of value out of my English degree. But the fact is, I think we just got to present these options on equal footing.
Well, the social cost of leaving so many young people unprepared. You mentioned the prison, pipeline, pipeline prison. And I'm afraid in this corridor area, we have a big mantle sucking a lot of young black and white prison. And a lot of it is because they have not been prepared either for higher education or for school today. And this is a very serious social cost for all of us. And a devastating thing for these young men.
Yeah, I think that's where it ties into a lot of the other... I mean, none of this is happening in a vacuum. You know, this ties into work companies, our company, this ties into equity, all of that. It's not, nothing's in the silo.
So you're looking for our approval to...
We're gonna look for someone to come in from outside and help us take a look at it. We've had conversations about how we articulate our junior high elective offerings and, and whether there might be more exploration that's available to kids and maybe more choice. We've been talking about how we get out and actually get student voice in the process so that we better understand what's working for them in school and what's not. So that's part of this engagement that we're gonna be ramping up in the fall. So again, before we started taking apart our CTE curriculum and looking at it and coming back to you with proposals, we wanted to make sure that, that that was okay if, if part of the arithmetic in that might involve subtraction in order to, for us to be able to do it within the scope of the resources that are available to us.
Good. Just add something before we move on. I, I just hope that when you guys go out to do this, that you don't work under the constraints of the model that we have, a seven, eight, nine, twelve. If it has to be something different that would work better, I would hope that you would bring that back as well.
Yeah.
You know, so don't just do what we're doing because it's what we've been doing.
It's why we'd like someone from outside to take a look at our program.
Think it outside the box. Everything on, you know, from AP to whatever, things on the table to think about. Those, what we're doing, make the most sense for kids.
Well, in this review, have we gotten input from the State Department as far as seeing where we are as far as meeting state standards? Like City High School, I think we're down to two tenths of an industrial tech instructor there. We have one person coming over from the junior high. The building's been destroyed. The equipment is gone. Teachers are gone. How can we possibly be meeting state standards at City High in industrial technology?
Diane's not here, but I know Diane worked through the offer and teach piece.
Yeah, I mean, that's the part with the strands that we have to certify with the state every year and the sequence of courses. So the students have to have courses available to them in those four strands. So I think when we talk CTE, a lot of times the special focus area, the interest of you two individuals is in industrial tech. And so we still have robust classes in FCS and business. And some of those health service areas that happen in the building. Industrial tech is one, you know, we certify or use other facilities other than what's on City High's campus to do that.
So we have three sequential units that we can call out for City High students?
Yes.
So we're going to, you're going to go get an outside first review. You've got some feedback from us, you have the areas that we're looking to pursue. It's not an asylum. Are we gonna add this to it? I mean, it said we wanted to talk about what we want this on, Jim, or June eleventh.
I don't think we'll have that by then. I, I know that I, I'm, I'll reach out immediately to the, the folks through ICAD and the chamber about workforce development so that we can get some idea of when we can get that information. That's probably sooner rather than later. Might be beneficial to invite one of them in. So let me talk to them first and find out if June eleventh is feasible from that standpoint.
I don't want to, I want to have, I want to schedule this at a time, not, not when we have a long...
Yeah.
This deserves a lot of energy. And we're not gonna have that at nine thirty at night. And it deserves a robust discussion. So let's just schedule it, however long it takes.
Yeah.
I get that there's urgency, but this needs to be a, I mean, you're talking not seven, I mean, you know, this is a robust discussion about a lot of different things. And it deserves a lot of...
Matt, nice sense of urgency as we know that we have a program of studies that we'll be bringing to you in November.
Yeah.
So we're trying to ramp up as we think about, are there changes that we want to make sure that are in place for the following school year? So...
Hopefully there's time this summer, right?
Right.
We schedule...
I just share with you, that's where our sense of urgency is, it comes with it.
Okay, that was a very good conversation. I appreciate that. We have ten minutes left for our last item. So speaking about not having as high of an energy to do the college classes. And we've just, you've been such a passionate advocate for... And we actually have a proposal for you in the, the set of different resolutions... in the set of different resolutions that we've had put out for consideration. I think I'll just, I'll just start by saying one thing. I was, as I read through the various resolutions, I had sort of a similar sense of response to, I think, some of the committee comments tonight around, that we're gonna do a resolution, let's not just do something that's a feel-good, go tell our state legislators to go do something, but with no real action oriented for our district. So if, and I think there were a couple in here that would really like that, that would just sound like, yay, we supported it, let's go tell our legislators to fix it. And then there were others that were super specific about what the district was gonna be signing out to do. I know that we're not gonna have time to get into the nitty-gritty of those topics that we've wanted included in a resolution, but I did kinda wanna pull the group and just see where were your thoughts in terms of, on that scale of, you know, if we're going to do a resolution on climate action, there's the scale of just kind of a feel-good versus, man, there's teeth and accountability. Where are we feeling like we'd wanna explore? Because I'm not sure we're gonna get a lot further in the short amount of time. It's just that the agenda's gotten so far tonight, we just haven't had the time, Jeff Campbell, that's conversation. But this is obviously not really the last opportunity we have to talk about this. But I'd open that for comments and reactions from board members on the resolution and what you'd like to see us pursue.
So when we did a resolution, we did an LGBTQ resolution.
Yep.
With that, we asked a task force to come back to us with their recommendation on what that should include. So I'm wondering, I know a task force did time, but it would be more focused and it would allow it to have a lot more time spent specifically on that as compared to higher war and spending time on, or maybe thoughts around what we want to take.
Would it be something that the operations committee could undertake as a committee? As, whoever's the three of you that are on it?
I think, I thought operations was now a committee in the whole.
I'd like, and I'd like to see.
Right? Isn't that what we, that's what we went to? So, and really, that should be, it should be everyone involved with it and that.
Yeah, I'd like to see it be a wider group.
No, I agree. No, I'm not disagreeing.
Wider than just the operations, but some community members, some teachers, students, students.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, there are a lot of different parts, right? I mean, I, sustainability, insurance, curriculum, solar finances, the idea of indoor life, I thought that was a unique perspective. So, and the students did it great. My guess is not to see cellular, right? My guess is that if we had, you know, other folks acted all the way, this, right? Because that was all, so you got, and so.
Well, the West Side student representative.
Oh, that's right.
Did as well, right? And so, so I, you know, I don't know. I mean, I guess I want wider input. To think about me sitting here trying to wordsmith something that's actually get them in compass or the board, I just.
That has teeth.
That has teeth. So to me, I think between, you know, these are the things we believe and our hopes and dreams. And because for me, it's teeth, but it's also, I, you know, I don't, because we've set lots of goals that we don't meet. We're gonna close proficiency gaps and, you know, and we don't meet those goals. So I don't also wanna have teeth that are just, well, we tried, we didn't get there. So I like it to be also founded in, like, okay, I know we can do this. When we put a new roof on, we will X, Y, Z.
And I don't, I don't know if I have the right one, Jeff, so you'd have to chime in on this, but.
Could Jeff join in the conversation?
The, I think the Madison one is Madison, Pittsburgh, and the county with the school district. Is that right? Is that, that's the one I found? So they're all together? The Madison Metropolitan School District one? If I found the right one, because that might be a great opportunity for us is, where's Johnson County? And where's the city? And how do we work together?
So for example, right, Northwest is getting a new roof pretty soon. Good time to put some solar plants off. Personally, as I took a walk by there, they got a nice big field that's probably not used for a whole lot, like the city of Corvina, right? And so I think these, finding these municipal partnerships if we can.
But, and we had the discussion earlier, I mean, on some buildings, it's gonna be way old and all of those things. So, you know, it has, you know, you've gotta have everyone in it, but absolutely right. There is opportunity, there is opportunity all the time.
I keep thinking of the front yard at West.
That's what you're looking for.
And I'm sure the county, I mean, of course, you know, the county's been doing a lot on this. So they're gonna bring in expertise and some drive, and a little political capital doesn't hurt.
My head is back on the comprehensive equity plan and the work development we're just gonna be doing. What's the, what's the technology, things, there's a plan, there are goals, there are strategies of the goals. There's, I mean, because a resolution's great, but if you don't put any action-oriented and concrete steps that we're gonna do to actually accomplish the stuff, then it's just gonna be more words on a page. So I think a resolution could get us moving, but I think we're gonna have to have that broader set of inputs around what's the action plan and set goals up a year and just say, okay, we're not gonna fill the switch and just instantly be sustainable. It's all the different, it's the food, it's the children, it's what all the students mentioned. It's a whole host of integrated activities to make us a sustainable district. And so that's the kind of detailed point I think that we would, if we're serious about this, wanna put in place. A resolution, again, is a good first starting point, kind of setting our values and ideals and those aspirational pieces. But, man, we need, we need an action plan.
And every building's gonna be different. There's probably things buildings can do, you know, in August, right away, that are fairly simple. And then some of these things are gonna be more district-oriented.
Well, and one of the recommendations by the students too has been curriculum.
That's right.
That needs to be, how do we fit that in? And I know when the list of the different areas where we felt it was in there, talking with the kids, that when they're looking at the list, well, yeah, they discussed maybe a little bit there. They're looking for more in-depth, robust discussion on that.
I mean, castles, I think, are a good model in a lot of ways for lots of different things. But I guess that's my hope, is if it, I think that's where it's gonna be the best, is coming from students.
I would like for us as a board, I know it's important to give the information from a broader group, but I think it's really important for us as a board to set the stage on what we want to see. Because we've gotten emails from students about recycling. We heard from students about composting, solar panels. I think we need to have a serious, in-depth conversation about some of the concerns that have been raised, both from the mic and in our emails, to set the stage, to give direction to, if we decide on a task force, great. Because what we don't wanna have happen is we say, oh, yeah, we want a resolution with teeth and bring something back to us. And then it's not what we want. I think we really need to have a conversation with the stakeholders that have been coming to us and reaching out, starting with some of the students, some of the parents, and some of the community members, because we've had all three subsets, either in our emails or right here in front of us. And it's, you know, I'm fortunate that we're just getting to the discussion tonight. I would like to see this moved forward earlier in a meeting, so we can have an in-depth conversation sooner rather than later. I mean, because as students are going on their flight week.
We need to do this before we end of school, and then we have that conversation.
And what you're saying, Ruthina, it's like the format of that? That'd be interesting. How, what does that look like? How do we get that input in a, is it a forum? Is it a Q and A? Is it a, I don't know. But I think it's not at a board meeting. It's maybe not at a brick session. I don't know.
I don't, I mean, it could be, we have open forum, small group meetings for, we've done it for boundary change.
Why are we gonna do a task force? What am I missing?
Because right now, the way things stand, we can't have that discussion at a board table, looking at our agendas for the next two meetings. So I think that's something that we need to look at our schedules and see, can we schedule something sooner rather than later? I mean, that's defined since at the board meetings.
And maybe I'm missing something, but back to Lori's point, is there, is there a reason you wouldn't look at a task force?
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out what the output is that you're talking about these weeks, when everybody's with the output. But, right, I'm what, do you go into a task force and say, I'm gonna speak all the way around now, but I'm stretching. But we say, our goal is to reduce our carbon footprint by fifty percent in whatever timeframe. Task force, what are your recommendations to make that happen?
Just like we're doing with equity.
Right? You're saying, this is the goal that we're gonna get to, and then figure out how to do that. If we just say, hey, do you guys want to do some sustainability stuff? That's weak.
Right.
And that's not gonna get you anywhere. So I'm okay with a task force with a very explicit target.
That's right.
But you felt like we needed to get some input so that we could give that.
No, I mean, have that conversation. I'm saying as a board, have that conversation, to have those very explicit directions. And we can do that as a board, great, but getting to the point that I think it's important to have some, you know, more than just the us, sitting around a table, coming up with those explicit directions. I mean, I, I'm fine with whoever it is, as long as there is explicit direction being given to the task force instead of to output what you did later.
Uh, next steps. I'm, if we're doing task force, we give the task force specific goals, then the board needs to talk again, get clearer on what our goals are, then.
I think that's what a resolution would be. A resolution as a board is, we're gonna hit these metrics.
Got it.
And we're gonna have a task force to help us make, you know, to come up with the action plan.
The action plan, like the development.
And it's not in your board docs, but it's in your email box now. The Madison one is in there, and it's got some of those concrete goals that are clearly delineated.
Janet, can I?
Please, please, please.
I'm really trying hard not to think that this is your call. So the kids are pretty adamant after doing their homework that every governmental body, the county, the city, the state, or the country is being asked to meet IPCC standards. Let me just start with that.
Yeah.
And that's what I put in your resolution. I took mine from Sonoma Schools, and then they have updated that to meet the IPCC, which came out in the fall. You simply, as Sean is saying, I think he's really made a good point. If you have a generic sustainability task force, that's a cemetery. But if you actually have passed a resolution tonight that says, hey, folks, we've heard the students, we've heard the parents, we've heard the committee, we hear what the rest of the world is trying to do, which is follow the IPCC, set it by forty-five percent within the next twelve years, then give that to a task force to see, is it possible? How do we do it? Figure it out? Is it not possible? Maybe it's not feasible. But at least you're setting the bar like the rest of the world is doing. And that's what the kids are asking.
But that resolution needs to happen at the board table, not at this.
It does. We wouldn't be able to vote on that, so not just from an action perspective, but, so.
That's a different type of resolution than what many of our examples are that are very, very detailed, so.
That resolution's in your agenda, right?
So I'm just saying, I'm great with that. I'm also fine with having more detailed one, or we can have like two, like start with that one and then ask the task force to come back with all the specific points of how the actionable, you know, the actionable things are gonna help us achieve the overall goal. Yeah, as a board, we have so many things that we're working on, and this is so important. We don't want it to just be another thing that's on our list. You know what I mean? I think, I feel strongly that we need a task force to really give it the attention that it deserves.
Yeah, I do think, and, well, I'm lying to the board as well, I mean, I think Jeff makes a good point around, an easy to pass resolution honestly would be just following this, the outline, I can see, you know, and then getting the task force in place to actually figure out how we're gonna do that. Our standard process for passing things is to have a couple of conversations, you know, here, this could be a, you know, one conversation and a discussion at a board meeting, and then you do two actions, just sort of a, sort of a three reading, but not quite, but yeah, it's a protocol. So maybe what we could do is put that discussion item on a upcoming board meeting to talk about what this resolution might look like and the notion of forming a committee, a task force, excuse me, to advance the action planning around the resolution. So maybe, maybe we just wanna have another topic at an upcoming board meeting on this one, getting around to what we might include in the resolution, and, you know, and then we can take it forward and actually pass it. But I couldn't ask tonight. I'm open to suggestions. I feel like we need more time to talk. It's after ten o'clock at night, and we're not able to give our greatest thought process and discologies for the timing. But I think we need to, I think we need to have conversations on this. I think we need a public conversation, not just community comment, where we actually talk at the board table and figure out the steps there in public and so that we're.
And then we can give some direction to you at that point, to the staff, to say, this is what the task force might look like. What do you think? I really think student engagement is more important on this than a lot of things, frankly. And getting the teachers to our.
I mean, it's compelling, I mean, it's super compelling in, you know, in a field with CO2. Then all the other conversations we've been having just might not matter in twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, right? So, so let's add this to, if the board's okay with that, let's add, can we add this to June 11th board meeting as a discussion item? And we can use the same resolutions that were included in this work session?
Or maybe throw the Madison one on there.
Throw the Madison one on there too.
I'm gonna add the IPC, IPCC website, which I also just sent to you, so you've got that.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you've got a group that has done much more work on that, and I don't have a standard or a goal for everyone, but I believe the wheel there, I mean, if that's what we're gonna try and attain, that's a nice, hard number that you put out there. How do you get there is where all the work happens, and I think that is what would require a focused group of people to do it.
Agreed.
That we're not gonna have, it's not going to happen in a random conversation at the board table, but I think that to make sure we're pointing in the right direction, we're agreeing on whatever spec we're gonna throw out there. Should happen at the board table in public.
That's what they want, to 2019, refine that. We're gonna ask, I think, a month ago or two weeks ago, can't remember which, three days ago, to have you explore the power purchase agreement. Do we have any information on that yet?
We can get that by June 11th.
That'd be great.
And if we're having a discussion on carbon, we better agree on what our carbon level is first before we come about getting at it. We better, we, we, we better be working with a number that we agree upon, that this is what it is, and then we're taking it down. Because if we look at our travel, that, that went back in, you know, if we, if we don't go to Disney World and we just go to Des Moines, that's gonna cut our carbon emissions drastically that way.
How do those kids get to Disney?
What all is involved in that? Are we just looking at electrical use, those types of things? What all gets, what all gets right into that discussion? Hey, so I just give ten seconds. The power purchase agreement, fifteen minutes, I've talked to four different solar companies. All of her are chomping at the bit. In order to the university, we went to very detailed lengths, RFPs. They're very complicated, we can certainly do that. But wait, they don't need an agreement that we all miss. Eagle Point wanted to be here, Moxie, Tim Dwight. They're lining up in every district, they come after you to give a free assessment on how they can do it. So we don't need to, if there's been any delay, it's intentional, because literally, you pick up the phone and you have people standing outside your door in five minutes. So really, really hope you can push that, because that's really very important to the kids, as you've heard tonight. I hate to take it back to them that still we haven't even pushed it up, to pick up the phone. There's really no excuse. I really appreciate your time. I know this is super. I really appreciate your time, I know this is super late, but the kids spoke out their hearts tonight, and I gotta go back and tell them. I guess what I'm gonna tell them is, on June 11th, you guys will take this up again?
At the board table, yeah. And that's our, and that's our process.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Yeah, good job. I think we're done? Yes? We're going to adjourn?